Call the public work session scheduled for Monday, April the 9th, 2018 of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons? Dr. Whitaker?
Mayor Rowe?
Here. Dr. Patton?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. On Monday, March 26, 2018, I presented to members of City Council and our citizenry the FY 2019 Proposed Operating and Capital Improvement Program budget. Over the past six weeks, we have presented and discussed, since our first budget meeting on January 22nd, a thoughtful and thorough approach used to balance the budget with no new taxes or fees. Tonight, during this public work session, key members of the budget team will walk you through the budget to share the key components of the proposed budget, to answer any questions, and prepare you to answer any questions that may be asked of you as members of City Council. In early November, department heads, the budget team, and the city manager met to discuss FY 2019 budget process. The department budgets were submitted on December 11th. The budget team hosted 42 budget hearings. The hearings engaged municipal departments and constitutional officers in presenting their budgets that were developed based on projected needs and related to the organization's program objectives and aligned with City Council's vision principles. The four Rs of review, reflect, refocus, and restore is the city's staff mantra, thereby leading the financial acuity in every aspect of budget preparation, management, and delivery of services. Tonight, we will review the key highlights in the FY 2019 Proposed Operating and Capital Improvement budget. We'll begin with the following presentations. Education, Dr. Patton. Workforce Development, internal, Mrs. Elizabeth Gooden. Capital Improvement Program, Mr. Brian Casey. Crawford Gate Rate Revitalization Strategy, Mr. Bob Baldwin. Budget at a Glance, Mrs. Ann Seward. The final presentation this evening will be the city attorney, Solomon Ashby, addressing matters that affect the city's tax revenues. As you set the tax rate for a given budget year, there are a number of factors that affect the actual revenues received. Mr. Ashby will cover a few of these areas as we enter the last stages of the FY 2019 budget process. Education is the best investment we can make, one that pays off in countless dividends for our children, community, and the city. To improve the quality of life in our city, attract new industries, and continue to prosper as a community with excellent schools are essential. The education highlights in the FY 2019 Proposed Budget, local share Portsmouth Public Schools is $52.8 million. In this $52.8 million is an additional nine school security officers at an amount of The request was from the school system for the city to support nine SSOs, and in the schools' budget, they proposed 10, for a total of 19 SSOs in the FY 19 budget. That will place an SSO in every school in the city of Portsmouth. In addition, the request for two or three additional SROs, which are school resource officers that are police officers. Currently, the school has five SROs. Three are in the high school, and there are two that float between the middle schools. With that said, we have an academy, a police academy, of which we will have 13 graduates by June of this year. In speaking and talking with the police chief and working with Dr. Bracy, we're looking to gain those three SROs through this class that will be coming out of the academy. As the chief has made clear, that an officer chooses to become an SRO, the chief cannot mandate that an officer is an SRO. So, we already have one that's in the academy that was an SRO in the city of Portsmouth, has returned here from Carolina after being away about six years, and has already indicated that he is interested in going back to be an SRO. So, the city, the chief, will make that determination, and we're looking in the 2018-19 school year that they will have additional SROs in the school. Let's look at some of the highlights in the Capital Improvement Program for Portsmouth Public Schools, and I'm going to take my time to go through this. The total amount of $7.8 million is proposed in the Portsmouth Public Schools Capital Improvement Program. In that $7.8 million is the design and engineering of the proposed new middle school of $3 million. In addition, we are looking in the FY 19 CIP to begin the design and engineering for the middle school immediately after the budget is adopted. On the 17th of April, MB Khan will be sending a representative to the city to begin the process of talking and working both with the city and the schools on the process of moving forward with the design and engineering, and, once the budget is approved, beginning all the processes so that work can begin as early as July. In addition, MB Khan has indicated that they will provide for us, from their team, persons who can begin to work with our finance office on grants and other availability of funds as they have worked with other school systems across the nation who have built new schools. In the FY 2020 budget, and you know the CIP is a five-year forecast all the way through 2023, we're proposing $17.5 million for, to begin the construction of the school, and in the FY 2021, we're proposing $17.5 million. That will total the $35 million for construction. I want it to be clearly understood that while the school construction is $35 million, the debt service obligation is $60 million, of which, starting in 2020, all the way through 2040, we will pay $3 million each year to cover the cost of building the new school. In addition, in the CIP for the schools, and over the past two years, we have been working with roof replacement in the schools, which are moving forward very well in that area. We have, over the past years, since the opening of Churchland High School, in some format, providing support for their school HVAC and ventilation system. The $3 million that's proposed in this budget, in working with the consultants who have worked with our engineers, will correct, will be the final part of correcting the HVAC issues that we've been working on year after year, and that there should not be any more problems for the next 20 to 25 years, once this work is completed. The Mount Herman bus loop is proposed in this budget. Ever since Mount Herman has been an elementary school, there has not been a designated bus loop, which is a dangerous situation, as they have called to our attention. So, we're proposing to have the bus loop built for Mount Herman Elementary. And Churchland Academy parking lot, right now, the way the parking lot is designed, we find at the end of the day, according to school representatives, that children get into mingle, trying to get to their parents' cars, and going in and out of traffic that may be in the parking lot backing up, backing up or whatever. So, we're proposing to build an additional parking lot out at Churchland Academy. And, over the past years, which this would probably be our third year since 2015, 2015, we're proposing the $1 million for the school bus fleet replacement.
And Dr. Patton, is that, is that about 10 buses, 15 buses?
It's 10 buses. This year, they, they ordered 11, excuse me, because there was a cost savings from the year before, and with that cost savings, they were able to get an 11th bus, but in this proposal here, it will be 10.
Pat, Bill?
I think it'd be good to get some figures on the average age of the fleet.
Okay.
And what their end game is. I think it would also be wise, and I know from experience that distribution companies have done this, and that's to look at school bus leasing programs. There are a lot of options available in that. I think we'd be foolish not to look at it, given the size of our fleet and the capital cost.
We have that noted, Mr. Moody, and we'll get with Dr. Bracy to seek that information, and with our vehicle services, because we actually take care of their buses.
I'll quit.
Provide the maintenance.
But you mentioned the $3 million for the school HVAC issue at Churchland, that that's the final payment, and that will correct all the issues?
That's the final project. That, that, there, there is a, there's something that they have to do. It's not paying off a lease or anything. This is work that has, this is the last phase of the work that has to be done to the HVAC.
Okay, but that's, but there will still be some additional costs associated?
No, this is it.
Yeah, because, reason I'm asking, because I thought, I know it was in the last two years, it was a significant amount that was presented that needed to be done on the HVAC.
And they, they have-
Down, down to $3 million?
Yes, and this last work, and this is working with the city's engineering, with the consultants, he has said that the work that they are doing will extend the life of this HVAC system and the airflow for the next 20 years. So, I assure, I say, are you sure we're not going to have to come back? Because I can remember as long as I've been here, when we first opened the school in about '93 and '94, that second year, under Richard Hartman, we started having to do things to address air quality in the schools. This clears up everything, and I'm, I'm real confident in Mr. Wright and the team he's working with. He's assured me. Okay? We have it noted, Mr. Moody, what you've requested, and we will begin to work on that.
Thank you.
All right. One, I'm, I'm going to go through the highlights of community culture and arts programs, of which, in our budget, we support that impact Portsmouth Public Schools, and you can see the programs there. Everyone is very familiar with the Starbase Victory, Portsmouth Foundation, the Academy for Music, Vision and Truth Strive Program, Governor's School of the Arts, Virginia Symphony Orchestra, Virginia Opera Association, Mosaic Steel Orchestra, Portsmouth Community Concerts, the Richmond Ballet, the Virginia Museum of Contemporary Arts and Young Audiences. All of these programs provide some educational component for children that are within Portsmouth Public Schools. For example, the Richmond Ballet actually brings to our city a program that engages elementary school kids in a ballet program, which is like a seminar, and I did not, I did not attend it this year, but last year, Mayor Wright, and they engaged everybody in it. So, these are actually educational programs and cultural at the same time that we involve children in. The Vision and Truth Strive Program, I think some of you may remember where, I think it was in 2015, or 20, I think 2016 was the last program, was funded last year, but they're getting ready to move back toward where there are our students that, for whatever reason, may have been not expelled but suspended for a day or two, and instead of those kids missing the education component that they would have gotten, but they can't go to the school because of something they may have done, then they are engaged in this program, which the school is very much aligned with. And I just remember the benefits that have been, arrived from kids not being out of school, just because I may have had an infraction, I'm not expelled or anything, but I'm just out maybe a day or two or three. So, that is what this is. When look over at citywide educational programs, we have the Tidewater Arts Outreach, and all of these programs are detailed in your budget book. The Virginia Children's Chorus, Black History Now, Nano Days at Norfolk State University, the STEM Program, the Virginia Standards of Learning, the Programmatic Offerings, and the Beasley Planetarium, of which we continue to, we continue to support. I'd like for you to refer to a sheet that is in front of you, which kind of gives you outline of direct funding for local Portsmouth Public Schools, which this $68.596 is our CIP and our $52.8 proposed. We have the local share, and then the capital improvements, and then the dollars which are aligned with each of them. But I want, it was something that we have not done in the past, and I want council to be very clear on just how we engage and support educational components for, for students in, in the city of Portsmouth, which impact Portsmouth Public Schools, but it's indirect funding. For example, the school resource officers that are in the schools, this is actually the cost of those officers, which are over in our city's police department budget, but those are costs. City takes care of all of the schools' grounds for the school system. Right now, that's at $192,066. When we look at the, I've just shared with you, the community arts at 122, and all of those programs with the amounts are listed behind it. Let's go on down and look at city educational support, which I called your attention, those amounts are there also, and it explains exactly what those programs are. But there's an area that has never, ever been mentioned, but it's, it's in our budget, and it's been in our budget over the years. It's, it's not anything new, but it's impacting youth that are in the city of Portsmouth, and by law, we are required, as city, to support these programs that are school-aged children, but may be in some kind of alternative program, but still, there are requirements for the city to cover. For example, juvenile youth and family support services, which includes four programs. You've got the Juvenile Court Service, which is a suborganization, community entity with Commonwealth Virginia Department of Juvenile Justice, and serves the public through a balanced approach of comprehensive services that prevent and reduce juvenile delinquency through partnerships. Those students, those, then they are students who are in these programs, by law, the city is required to provide the funding for them. You've got the Children's Services Act, which the city receives $2,554,580, but the city has to match, and our match is $721,036. Then you have the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, and the Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act, and this is a requirement, and this is a grant designed to establish a community-based system of progressive intensive sanctions and services that correspond to the severity of offenses and treatment needs. And then Friends of the Portsmouth Juvenile Court, and this program is designed to monitor court-ordered community service for juveniles between ages of 12 and 18. And their, their request this year stems more of the additional purchase of anklets or the bracelets that students who, and they can go to school, or in these programs, will, will have what they need to continue to be monitored. So, if you look at the direct funding of $60 million, and then the indirect funding, which is $580,473, and all of the others, just looking at this budget, the proposed budget, and support to programs that impact youth who are students at some, some level, we're at a grand total of $66,114,596. So, this is a comprehensive of all that's within the proposed FY 19 budget as it pertains to education in this budget.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Patton, when you, the last issue was just discussing the, on page 5, the indirect funding, the community cultural arts, those initiatives here, are these new programs, or are these-
These are programs that we, we've been supporting all along.
Right, so-
Right.
So, this isn't changing any-
This is not changing, but I've never, ever, we've never, ever put it where we can see the totality. We were asked, and, which was a good ask, if you asked, what are all of the dollars in this budget that are going for something that relates to youth that are at the ages of being in a school program? And although our children may be in alternative forms of programs, they still are part of that school-age youth. And in, just speaking and talking with our team about some of our kids that are in certain kinds of programs, which would be the Children's Services Act, if we can't provide for a child, whatever his or her needs may be in the region or within the state, then we are required to cover wherever that child may have to be sent for whatever that issue is for that child to be covered. So, they're still our kids, and we're still providing for them.
Yeah. The reason I'm raising this is because I understand visually what this does, is trying to show how much-
Yes.
-is going to a supportive education.
Right.
However, the issue that the schools have presented, as far as the level of funding that has been received over years, although this year, the only increase is because of the public safety issue.
Right.
The issue still remains that this budget does not address the significant salary increases that have been requested in the budget. And so, coupling all of these programs together to show the impact on youth, I think it really doesn't address the main issue that was in that budget, and that doubles the teachers, not only teachers, but all the employees. And, and I thank for this council to ignore that increase for school employees, as we have increased the salaries for city employees. I, I think that that's not really a just budget, and to try to present all of these programs to show we are supporting education, I think that when the superintendent submits a budget that is requesting pay raises and the issues that we're competing with other districts, I don't think this is a genuine effort to really address the educational needs of, of the school system. So, I appreciate that information, but as you said, this has been ongoing. The salary increase is something that is reflecting real-world cost of living issues that persons are facing, so I don't, I don't see this, because, I mean, we could throw in a whole lot of things other than this to show support for youth activities, if we really want to stretch it that far. So, I don't, I don't think this is suggesting that we are addressing education as we should, and definitely not addressing the pay increase that was requested.
Right, Dr. Whitaker, we are not proposing any pay increase for city employees in the 2019 budget. In that budget, we have 130 people in the living wage, which last year, we had 162. We addressed the last year, we're coming back proposing in 19, which has 132, 130 employees who are below $30,000, and most are below, still below the $27,000. So, in this budget, the only proposed is a living wage increase addressing 130 city employees who are below $30,000 annual salary, and some of those employees have worked for the city in excess of 10 to 15 years and still below the $30,000. So, that's the only wage increase that's in this budget.
And what does that amount to?
That's right at $200,200. $200,200. That's all that's in this budget. I indicated in the budget message that after the budget process, from the months of June through to October, the staff will be, as we do every year, working, looking at the budget, see where there are cost savings, and if there is an amount that we can come back and propose, some kind of increment of a bonus or a something before the year's over, we would come, come back and make such a recommendation, but there's no proposed increase for city employees in this budget. All right, with that said, we'll bring forward Mrs. Gooden, who will speak on internal workforce development. And you hold that one.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Again, what I'm going to present is give a quick little overview of our workforce development internal program.
She's going to talk.
Our internal workforce development program seeks to provide a holistic and future-focused approach by incorporating talent acquisition and management, competitive compensation, professional development, and wellness to place the city of Portsmouth on the forefront of economic development through our collaborative workforce development plan. When we speak to talent acquisition and management, we are looking at the process of finding and acquiring skilled human labor for organizational needs. We're using this in the context of our recruiting. We're trying to make sure that we stay on the cutting edge to make sure that we are securing the most talented individuals that we can, as far as acquiring people. As I said in a couple presentations ago, the Hampton Roads area has a large influx of millennials, and also with the management, we're looking to also retain a qualified and skilled workforce. When we speak to our compensation, just won't elaborate too much, Dr. Patton shared a lot, but what we're doing in our compensation module for workforce development is, again, is to look at our living wage, is, again, is those most modest salary earners, 130. We know it's going to be a multi-year process, so it's not one thing we'll be able to eliminate in just one year. With respect to professional development and training, as with any workforce, and which you hear a lot about in the scholarly literature, is that with our labor, we have to take the time and make sure we're developing skills, that means soft skills, technical skills, also providing for some additional trainings to really enhance the services that we provide to our, our citizens. Some of the ones that we're looking for, you hear a lot about in the media today, is emotional intelligence, to make sure that our employees and our leaders that were self-aware, we understand the impact of our leadership and our management style, and the impact it has on our employees. And we're also looking for to also, to keep, continue to build our workforce by providing some basic skills, some soft skills, communication skills, some interview training for some of our internal candidates to assist them as they continue to go up the ladder. One of the things we also look for in our talent acquisition and management model is what we call a career ladder, getting to provide our employees with the ability to kind of look towards the future and figure out some other places they can actually go, instead of just thinking they're in one job. What a career ladder also does, it provides some flexibility to our hiring- What a career ladder also does, it provides some flexibility to our hiring departments as they look to secure talent. For example, one of the areas where we've actually started, actually two departments, one's economic development with their manager of business development. We have some different tiers that helps Mr. Moore as he goes and looks at candidates. He can best fit based upon that person's skill set to fit the needs we need for our city. He might find someone who has a good skill set in the retention of businesses, someone in acquiring, but he has an opportunity through three different levels to actually get the talent that he needs. We've also expanded this to our planning department with our zoning function to make sure that we also can get some flexibility there. One of the things, I'm sure everyone saw the article, I believe it was later this week with the Stewarts, and how they had spent about 30 years here. We need to also start working on our next group of people who are going to spend time here, you know, invest their time, their families and all of that. So that's what we're also looking to do. Lastly, with wellness, our wellness initiative, as we tell everyone, a healthy employee is a productive employee. And we are really looking to incorporate a lot of different wellness events we're proposing. Some of them include like a Wellness Wednesdays, something to really get employees up and moving. We're also looking at doing some things that also incorporate some teamwork. We're looking to have a team step challenge where our teams get together and kind of over a five-week period accumulate, see who can take the most steps during a certain period of time. We're also looking to have a signature event to have an employee's 5K run walk, something really just to get the community involved, find a good little route through the city and really get employees out there. One of the things you can really get through a really good wellness program, and what we're looking to also do is to really also have some impact on our benefit cost. We probably spend about $20 million on employee health benefits, dealing with some very lifestyle-related conditions, you know, diabetes, hypertension, things of that nature. And these are some things that we can all do by getting that moving around a lot. You also hear that having a sedentary job can take so many years, you know, off of your life. So we're really looking to get people engaged up and also moving around. One last area I did forget to mention with our internal workforce development plan, one of the things that had been brought to our attention and we're proposing as it relates to a benefit would actually be for our full-time paramedics and to provide them with an enhanced hazardous duty pay in that regards. Our paramedics, kind of unlike our sworn fire and police right now, they actually go out there in some very challenging situations. They're right there besides our police officers and our firefighters. And we also need to make sure that we also look out for our full-time paramedics to make sure if something should happen, that they have something to look and take care of their families with. One thing that I would be remiss to not share, one of the things that I think we should also talk about with this workforce development program is that actually there are no new general fund positions added here. We've actually gone back and we've actually looked at kind of a realignment of city positions to make sure that each department can maintain its optimal effectiveness and efficiencies. So I think that is one good thing that we actually have to note as far as internal workforce development program.
Mayor, I'd like to just call to council's attention that with the wellness component that we have worked to initiate over the past two years and going into the third year, the insurance providers that we have, we benefit when we show through programmatic pieces that we are, as a city, they're the insurers, are doing some things to try to address some of the health-related issues that are critical in our workforce. So this aids us not only in, when we go back out to renegotiate health care for our employees, when the organizations, the providers can see that the city is doing something to try to address health, that helps to reduce our costs. And right now, as Mrs. Gooden said, in this budget, our coverage is about $20 million.
It's also important to note, and one of our vendors, what Optima Health actually does, they actually give us $25,000 to use towards our wellness programs. So we can use that for any type of incentive that we have that we think is going to improve health. One of the things we did in 2017, we ran a wellness program on diabetes awareness. Those individuals who actually either have diabetes or have the potential to develop diabetes, they actually were contacted by Optima Health Care, and they're actually given a little plan. They just had to hit six little milestones as far as doing certain things with appointments, and they actually got received a $100 gift card. Now, that gift card was used towards future health care needs. So they are also, as Dr. Patton says, they're invested in making sure that our employees are healthy, thus, you know, reducing our claims costs.
Can you speak to the non-public safety-funded but vacant positions?
How many that are vacant?
How many and at what period of time do we stop funding a position that's vacant? Perhaps maybe two years would be the...
Right. As indicated, Mr. Moody, we're going to get that report for you. Right now, I can't, we can't, I cannot say how many or how many years, but we had talked about putting together that report, and we will, we will get it as soon as we possibly can.
The reason why I say that, I think that represents probably a substantial amount of money, and if we're operating at an efficient level, you know, why are we still funding something that's, that's not there, not being utilized? It could be used for other things, whether it be teacher's salary increase, retirees' bonuses and increases, but I would, I would like to see how we're going to manage that.
We shall. If that information...
If I'm hearing Mr. Moody correctly in the response, are you saying that you don't have a figure in this year's budget that represents vacancies?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm...
So do you have a figure in this year's budget for vacancies?
Oh, 5%.
As far as savings, overall saving dollars with position numbers?
No, positions, the vacancies that are in the budget for positions that have not been filled, what's that dollar amount?
She can answer.
I couldn't answer that for you. Go ahead.
How about, how about kidding that we have it for tomorrow?
We could. Okay.
Do you have it tonight?
I don't have that right off the top of my head tonight, but I'll, what we put in this budget for vacancy savings is 5%, as we did last year.
5% of what?
Total payroll.
Yeah. 5% of the total payroll.
It represents vacant positions?
Yes.
Yes, 5% of the total payroll is the amount that we set aside in this budget.
And the total payroll is...
I can't say that right off the top of my head, what the total payroll is. I think it's...
Whatever it is, it's 5%.
Right.
What they do is, if the payroll cost is 100, then we appropriate 95. We never appropriate the full 100 because we account for turnover.
That's right. We'll have a report back on that tomorrow.
Also, in regards to those vacancies, what about for fire, fire police?
We would have, we'd look at them all. We'll have that report tomorrow.
But what I'm asking is, does, does the budget account for filling all of the fire and police positions?
Yes, the fire and police at this point are almost, with the academies that they have right, people in right now, those vacancies that they have pretty much going to be filled.
So, so the budget that's being proposed is based on 100% fire and police positions?
Being filled, we are, they are close to it. We'll be close to it.
Can we get how many, how many vacancies there are for each of those fire and police?
We can. Thank you, Mr. Moody. Could you push to go to the next one? Okay.
You can get that tomorrow, too?
We should be able to.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, tonight I'll give a brief overview of the 2019 capital improvement program.
Get your budgets.
Multi-year construction projects are essential to maintain and develop city assets. The FY2019 CIP five-year program was developed to be strategic in the projects proposed, maximize outside funding sources, and stay within the limited debt capacity of the city. The CIP section begins on page 14-1 of your budget books with the following highlights.
Wait till they get to 14-1 so that they can begin to follow.
309 million total for five years, and that's all funds in the CIP. We deferred a number of projects to stay within our debt capacity of 67 million. FY19 authorizes 21.1 million in GO bonds, 55.9 million in utility revenue bonds, with a debt service of approximately 2 million in future payments. Key highlights of the CIP program include the following. Effingham Street improvements at the Naval Medical Center is located on page 14-39. Department of Social Services HVAC roof replacement located on pages 14-84 and 14-85. Operations Centers Fuel Station reconstruction, page 14-92. Churchland Bridge replacement is located on page 14-33. Seawall replacement, page 14-110. The city fiber network is located on page 14-82. Trucks and Fire Station is on page 14-112. And Portsmouth Public Schools located on pages 14-54 through 14-65. Any questions?
This relates back to education. The $3 million for the A&E cost for the proposed middle school, what's the source of funding for that? Is it fund balance or general fund revenues?
Bonds.
It's bonds. So we're rolling up the $3 million in the bond issue that comes with this?
Right. Because we took the $3 million to... Any other questions?
So the total CIP improvements are 772?
772 for...
What page are you on, Miss?
14-8.
14-8.
Is that the total capital improvement funds that we're going to spend?
That's for the five years.
For the five years.
Counsel? Just 772 for five years. The 772 that you see referenced, I think you said it was on page...
14-8.
14-8 includes the prior authorized CIP projects, and the total five-year is actually about 308 million. So that grand total that you see is prior authorized CIP projects and to include in five years.
The 462 plus the 309.
Yes, correct.
Yeah. It includes the first column.
First column.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Marshall. Any other questions, members of council? Yes, sir.
Are we over our fund balance?
Are we over our fund balance? We're not over our fund balance. We have to go to the podium. We have a percentage by ordinance.
And refresh council's memory as to what our policy is, fund balance, the percentage of revenues, whatever they are.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the city has a policy, a financial policy that governs the minimum threshold. The minimum threshold is 15%. That is actually pretty low, I think. You actually have opportunity to grow that if you want to...
So 15% of what?
15% of the total budget. So you take your total current revenues, take 15% of that number, and that's the minimum threshold that you're to have on hand, and that's to help you cover, you know, on a daily basis. You have bills that are going out, however, revenues don't come in on a daily basis. They usually come in on a quarterly or a semi-annually basis. So that's why you hold a fund balance. You also hold fund balance for emergencies.
And you're speaking specifically general fund balance?
Yes, that is correct, general fund balance. So I believe, doing this from recollection, your June 30th, 2017 fund balance was about $55 million. You do annually have some appropriation that you pull from that for what we call PEGO, your capital improvement program. So about $7 million or $5.7 million, I believe, is programmed in this budget to be drawn down from your fund balance. We try to match those for what we call one-time needs, so that you're not drawing from one-time monies for recurring purposes, so.
And so the minimum is 15%.
Yes.
It was mentioned during the manager's presentation that there was, I think, $3 million in amount that was a one-time use from the fund balance.
I think it's about, so you have a $5.7, I'm doing this off from memory, $5.7 million draw from the fund balance, approximately $4.7 million of that, I believe, is going towards our capital improvement program. You have some one-time projects. You have $100,000 that's going towards some transportation initiative studies, and another million dollars that we drew from fund balance is a one-time draw for your OPEB contribution.
Okay, and so for our, for our credit rating, what's the issue with pulling from the fund balance and the credit rating?
So, so your credit rating agencies like to make sure that you can operate off of your current revenue. So your fund balance is really there to support your cash flow needs on a daily basis, and for those instances that unfortunately occur, whether it be, you know, hurricanes that happen, major snowstorms that happen, those things that really aren't within your control, but they do require you to sometimes have to reach into your pocket and pull out for one-time needs. And so that's one of probably the top seven things that they look at when they're rating and ranking a locality, is how healthy and your ability to respond to those types of emergencies.
I think, Mrs. Stewart, if you would speak to debt service and the capacity and the debt.
Sure. So probably one of the biggest challenges that you have as a city is the amount of debt that you carry. We have, there are two, two terms that you'll hear discussed, especially with rating agencies, and one of them is debt capacity. You are limited. There's some Code of Virginia limitations that hold you to 10% of your total assessed value, and that's the maximum amount that, you know, in Virginia you can issue in debt. You also have some, some more restrictive financial policies that speak to how much bonds you can have issued at a time. Currently, you only have about $67 million of additional debt capacity over the next five years. That's not very much at all. And so there was a lot of shuffling that had to be done in developing this budget and in the CIP to make sure that we got the school in there, and had to push out a number of pretty important projects. So this is something that the city managers directed us to take a look at in this next budget, to try to come up with some alternative ways to fund some of your maintenance projects, possibly creating some capital maintenance reserve funds to help with that. But your, your debt capacity is a concern, so it's something that we will, as we build, you know, your future projects, we're going to have to be very careful about what we issue bonds for and what we choose to fund with cash and...
So, so fund balance-wise, how much are we above that 15% minimum?
Well, it changes on a daily basis. So I can speak to your June 30th, 2017, I believe the number was approximately $55 million that you had at that point, but again, it goes down. You know, you have, that's at a peak point of when your payments come in, and so it will go down each month and come back up when you have your tax, financial, real estate, and personal property taxes coming in.
So when it's at that 55 million, what percentage is that above the 15%?
I can do that calculation, but, but when, when you reference that number, it's as of June 30th. So literally July 1st it will change, July 2nd it will change. So it will float up and down, and we may have to...
If you could get that number so that we can have it done.
We can certainly calculate as of June 30th what that percentage is.
Okay.
Sure.
Thanks, Mrs. Stewart.
Absolutely. I think one of the items that we were going to address, you all have at your stations what we call a budget and a grant. And so this is for, we all, we all know that the budget document is a pretty heavy document, a little 400 pages, a lot of important information there. What we tried to do is to condense the major points of the budget into two pages, both for your citizens, your constituents, any questions that you all may get. So we've given you a few copies at your station. This is all... This is also will be published on the city's website effective tomorrow. It talks about many of the points you've already heard today, all of the major projects that are included in your capital program. And additionally, on the back, it takes your general fund and it breaks it down by your revenue sources. So you can see the different kinds of revenues that come into the city as well as the various categories of expenditures. So it's a quick glance at how the money comes in and how it goes out. We've also put the reference to the link on the Wood Cities website where they can go and view the document in full, as well as some of the important dates relative to public hearings that are coming up and certainly a contact number should there be any detailed questions from the citizens, they can call and get more information. So we hope that's helpful to you. Any other questions?
This is a wonderful piece of paper.
We have some extras in case council members would like to take some with you when you're talking with some of your constituents or citizens. We have some additioners, ones you can get from City Club. All right. Mr. Asher, you... We finished... Could you flip it to...
Mr. Moore is next.
No, Mr. Moore.
Oh, Mr. Baldwin.
Oh, Mr. Baldwin comes next. You have to push it forward. Right. Okay, Mr. Baldwin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will be brief on this. Since City Council had an in-depth briefing on our Crawford Gateway project that you retrieved back on February the 2nd, we went pretty much in detail over a lot of those issues. You may recall one of the... Is there another slide on here? Back to Pat.
No, that's...
As you may recall, as part of that process, we listed a number of items. There were five in particular which we want to get moving forward on using existing capital budgeted funds. I'll just kind of run down through those very quickly. We have the development of the Stormwater Park back behind the Civic Center building where the Civic Center parking lot is. We had site selection, preliminary engineering for public safety complex. We had the space needs assessment for the future City Hall building. The Crawford Gateway, Crawford Street and Parkway corridor study. And also, we had the study and assessment, the financial one, high level, for the Civic Center jail site, all of that replacement. As you recall, the retreat, Council gave staff the go-ahead to proceed, looking at these items. Just want to mention to you that of those five items I just mentioned, we already have three projects with consultants on board. We hope to have a fourth one on Friday. So we're making very quick progress trying to at least start the study process. So as you move forward and get into decision-making mode, we'll have much more information available to City Council. So those projects, again, just following up from your retreat, we're making good progress in getting those things started. Obviously, it's been just about two months, so we're in very early stages, but we are making progress on that. You'd like to answer any questions, Heather?
Thanks, Mr. Moore. Asher. Is... That's marble. It's not marble.
Give me a marble.
It's marble.
Typically, when a city approves a budget, and once it's approved, it is generally expected that the revenues forecast will be those set or established in the course with the tax rate. This evening, I just wanted to go over a couple of issues with regard to the upcoming budget and some of the realistic situations the city is faced with that dictate a conservative approach with regard to forecasting budget revenues and budget expenditures. And this is a general overview of some of the laws and some of the procedures that impact that process for the city. As I said before, typically, when budget is accepted and approved, there's a certain amount of cash flow that's expected. However, state code provides a couple of different avenues whereby those revenues may not, in fact, become realized, where individuals and businesses can, in fact, challenge their tax assessments. Three methods are most typical when we deal with local taxes. As it relates to businesses, there can be appeals to the Tax Commissioner with regard to business taxes and licensing issues. We do have administrative appeals for Board of Equalization when it comes to residents' tax assessments. And there's also the opportunity to challenge a tax assessment in the court. One method that is a little unique that we're also looking at this year when it comes to state utilities, those entities governed by the State Corporation Commission, there's also an opportunity to challenge those tax assessments. And in some respects, the city of Portsmouth is not unique in addressing or having to deal with those types of challenges in the recent past and currently. And we've talked about this a little bit in different settings. We do have some recent experience with regard to some of these challenges. In 2016, '17 time period, we did have a business entity, in fact, challenge a tax assessment that resulted in approximately $300,000 in a tax revenue refund. That was the two East Coast entities. As you all are aware, and we've talked about previously, with regard to Virginia International Gateway, we do have present challenge for a particular real estate and personal property tax year that has approximately $2.5 million in question. The newest issue is with regard to the State Corporation Commission. Wheel of Braid of Portsmouth is currently before the State Corporation Commission, trying to get some relief from a $92 million tax assessment. That is not the amount they're trying to reduce. That's the amount at issue. They have a total of $92 million in tax assessed value that they are challenging now. The biggest part of this issue and concern as it relates to the city is something that I know I've mentioned before, but I always try to make sure everyone in the city is aware of it. Where the city code provides for a 10% interest for failure to pay your taxes on time, state code also says if there is a refund, there must also be given 10% interest on that refund. A number of folks have talked about it across the city. We talk about it internally a lot. There's no place else that you can get 10% on your money. And so that particular statute presents some real issues when you have individuals challenging tax assessments. In our conversations with the various city departments and with finance in particular, we talk about the need of looking forward in terms of having some contingencies as well as some reservations of dollars and cents as it relates to these types of issues because they are either more frequent, they're both more frequent, and they're significant dollar values. So when you talk about these and you're not talking about replacing dollar for dollar, but perhaps a dollar 10 for every dollar, the city has to be very judicious in terms of what it does with its funds as well as strategic in terms of how it addresses those issues. And so that's one aspect of it. I also want to make you aware of, in this budget ordinance, you'll also receive, be given a provision whereby when we have these types of challenges, if there is some sort of claim or some need to address a settlement, those funds typically come out of the same revenue fund related to that particular matter. For instance, with regard to East Coast, that would have come out of essentially general fund monies because there were taxes that were put into the general fund. The ordinance that'll come before you will allow the city to pick up those dollars and if we have to pay a claim or resolve a case, resolve them out of the same funds from which they derive their original relationship with the certification from our office and the order to pay funds out of the city manager's office. So I wanted to make you aware that that is part of the budget package this year. And last but not least, with regard to tax rate adjustments, as you all know, periodically we do adjust the tax rate. This year, you all received information from the assessor with regard to assessments going up. Typically, if you're not going to reset your tax rate in order to accommodate an increase in tax assessment, that is considered a tax increase. It's called an effective tax increase. The notices that are going out to the citizens identify an effective tax increase for the city, although we have not changed the rate at all, is just simply because the assessment of property increased. I want to make sure you all are aware of that because, of course, you'll get some questions. The notices do say this is an effective tax increase, although the rate stays the same. That is purely based on the assessment value of property going up significantly. We will... The city is not asking for any adjustment. It is not going to adjust that dollar value at present. We are looking toward different issues with regard to collection and whether those revenues, in fact, manifest themselves. If there is an issue, we certainly can address that down the road. But we wanted to make you aware of that because that notice is new for this year. Last year, we did not have an effective tax increase. Any questions?
Just curious, on the 10% interest that's required on refunds, are these refunds as a result of a court challenge or refund period?
Essentially, you see the refund when someone takes it to court. But I won't say everyone. We have a growing cadre of tax consultants who will come to the Commissioner of Revenue or the Real Estate Assessor and will have a discussion about these types of issues and negotiations, be they claims that haven't been filed in court and discussions with my office or claims with the assessor or the Commissioner of Revenue. So it is not a secret in the Commonwealth of Virginia that if there is a miscalculation, there's an issue about refund in that 10%.
Okay. So is this a result of some type of judicial conclusion or...
It's state law.
Okay. No, I mean, this wouldn't be a refund where someone has overpaid and now they're getting a refund. This is a refund as a result of some adjustment being made.
Correct. But I will tell you that more often than not, it is an adjustment that is being made. As I often tell people, it's... Unfortunately, it could be like you filing your income taxes and not taking any of your deductions, coming back later, the next year, whatever, filing your deductions and then saying, "Okay, I want my refund and 10%." More often than not, that is probably not the motivation, but that is the effective result. If there is an adjustment, there could be a claim for the 10% interest also. And just to give you the timeframe again, you have essentially three years to challenge those.
But this wouldn't be where a citizen pays more real estate taxes than they're supposed to and then get a refund and 10% added to that.
Dr. Whitaker, I will tell you that there are folks who probably had a question in mind as to whether or not that's ever happened. But what I will also tell you is that our assessors have to be very diligent to make sure because...
My issue is whether... The issue, would the city have to legally pay 10% on that?
That is a bit of an open question. There's no caveat in the legislation. That is a bit of a question. So it's incumbent on us to be accurate, high, low, or otherwise.
Let me follow up with your question. If we charge somebody, let's say, the garbage collection fee for six months, and lo and behold, they were not required to pay, and so we refund six months' worth of paid garbage collection fee, are we required by law to refund that with 10%?
No.
I believe this is dependent on real estate taxes. No, not each and every fee.
Real estate.
And there again, there are certain taxes that, for which this applies.
I could make an argument that you've had my money for six months.
But this is real estate. This is what has been thus far from the state.
If the real estate tax is $1,000 and someone pays $2,000 and then they have to be refunded, are they required to get 10% off of that or back with them?
It would be best practice for us to make sure we're accurate on that front because there is...
I mean, it's not a matter of accuracy. You send a accurate tax bill and they pay $1,000 more.
Then we have to account for that appropriately, Dr. Whitaker. And that's what I'm saying. In our accounting, we're going to account for whether it's an overpayment or whether it's supposed to be applied. Again, our billing system incorporates a number of different fees and taxes together. And so it's incumbent on us to make certain that if we see some irregularity, that we get to the point and determine what the issue is. Issue a refund immediately if that's what's required or make sure we're clear on that particular payment.
Sounds like this question is a yes or no question.
Yeah, I mean, if you sent me a bill and my tax bill for the year is $2,000 and I send in $3,000, when I get refunded, is it 10% of taxes?
If we held that money for a year, that might be a question, Dr. Whitaker.
Why don't you research it and bring it back?
Yeah, but it's really corporations.
It's a way to make 10%.
Well, right. And that's what I think that's what Dr. Whitaker's getting at. Somebody could intentionally put that money in there with the hopes of getting a 10% return on it. And that's what he's saying, not us being incorrect, but the individual sending in overages intentionally, trying to get 10%.
And I will tell you, that's why I make the point with everyone involved to be very accurate about doing that because we have some unique measures in Virginia. Our meals taxes, we self-report a bunch of taxes, which means you determine what your revenue is and then you submit the taxes. That, I won't say is unique, but that's fraught with a number of opportunities to manipulate those types of numbers. I would not put bad motive on individuals, but there again, it's incumbent upon us to make sure we're accurate in terms of...
But it's not an accuracy issue. That's what I'm... That's why my issue is, that's just someone sending in a payment trying to get 10%. And I'm trying to see how does the city protect itself?
They return the extra.
Yeah, so that you don't... So that we're not paying 10% to people trying to game the system.
That's right. But then you've got these corporations or businesses, and as Mr. Asher and we met with Mr. Edmondson some time ago, indicating that law firms are adding on at great numbers lawyers who are out seeking what we've dealt with with East Coast Auto, of which we paid.
All right. Let's... I recommend, and no, this is a ask, that you answer the question, research it, and not only as it relates to the payment of real estate taxes, but also if we charge, again, a fee for six months for garbage collection and we, lo and behold, people don't live there, the bill is in error, do we have to pay 10%? And just look at the issue because I think it's really important for us to have a feel of what the law requires.
Couldn't we address that by amending the code to specifically state that with the exception of intentional overpayment?
No, we've got to deal with the law.
If somebody's sending a check for a lot more than what they're supposed to, then we shouldn't even cash it. Send it back to them. Send us the right amount. And that way, we don't have it. And if they're late beyond that point, then they're going to owe us 10%.
Can you do some research?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, this concludes the presentations for tonight.
I did have another question for Mr. Asher.
I do have another question for Mr. Ashby.
Ms. Ashby?
Yes, sir.
At the last meeting, the question about the outside legal costs we incurred, will we have that information?
It should be with your, in your mailbox.
It is, okay.
It's in your mailbox.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we'll convene tomorrow at five o'clock, meeting this journal.